Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lasperrance, Cascade Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lasperrance.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
And Clerk Slater here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the great law which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, boy.
There are motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
The move.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Kessel, supported by Trustee McDonald, to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no presentations tonight, this will bring us to the first round of public comments. This is the time to speak on anything on tonight's agenda, which is quite light, that isn't scheduled for a public hearing. So please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for record keeping. You're not limited to what's on the night's agenda, Senator. You can.
Thank you.
Have a little special treatment.
Good evening, Chair and trustees. Thank you for an opportunity to just introduce myself. My name is Mark Keisinga, and I'm the State Senator for this new 30th district. I apologize it's taken me a little bit of time to make my rounds. We got started early on the year with all of our new townships and municipalities, and then we got into the thick of the budget. And so here we are now in the summertime. Just a little background, I've been in your shoes before. I served as the mayor of the city of Walker, and I think local government is one of the most important roles that we have in our communities. And I appreciate the work that you guys do there. So I want to say thank you for that. After that, I served in the Michigan House of Representatives for two terms, and I'm currently in my second term in the Michigan Senate. And I'm just here to say hello, put a name and face together. And I wanted to give you just a couple of updates on our budget and things that we've worked on and things that are germane to our communities. First of all, things that we stood for, that we were able to negotiate, I think which are very important are $800 million in reserve payments for debts to stand out, to make sure we can be responsible fiscally. $200 million towards the state higher education retirement fund, also known as MIPSers. And fulfilling the obligations of those gone before us to pay for those pension dollars is really important for all of us. So I was happy to support that as well. Funding for additional higher school resource officers, $215 million to repair local roads and bridges, over $500 million for drinking water and wastewater improvements. And then a number of things that are important to our district that I was able to secure, including $5 million for the Grand Rapids Children's Museum, $1 million for WIMCAT, which does great work with teaching those that are underprivileged in impoverished communities to learn high skills like pharmacy technicians and things like cybersecurity. $1 million to improve healthcare through biomedical research for the Vandal Institute, which has been a catalyst for our communities to continue to grow. $14 million for the John Ball Zoo expansions. $2 million for junior achievement for both Grand Rapids and Detroit. $1.5 million for the Blanford Nature Center. $1 million for the Grand Rapids Public Museum. $3.5 million for Cascade Charter Township for your suburban recreational pathway. $35 million for Grand Rapids Fire Stations. $1 million for Exalta Health. It's not in my district, but I believe firmly in what they're doing there with helping both immigrants, refugees, and those without coverage. And in conjunction with that, $1 million to the Kelvin University with their Masters of Public Health program, because they work together to teach those, to help those that have greater needs. In the long run, those things help our communities work better and lowers costs for our community. I've always run on transparency, availability, and accountability. So if you ever have any questions, please feel free to contact me. I'll make sure you all have a copy of my business card.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Anyone online? Okay, that concludes this portion of public comments. Is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda? A consent agenda, excuse me?
I have one comment before you do that. There is a tiny little correction on page two of those minutes. Just that item 062 is an ordinance. We voted it as a resolution. It was a resolution to amend an ordinance. So I just want to make sure that was clarified because PUDs are ordinances. That's the only correction I have for the 7540 and 7550 Alaska Ridge.
Move to approve the consent agenda with Sue's changes?
Support.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve the consent agenda with the modifications as stated by Clerk Slater, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no financial actions or unfinished business tonight, we'll move into new business, Article nine. First item 065, 2023, the resolution to approve AT&amp;T's five-year Metro Act permit extension.
Thank you. We received a letter from AT&amp;T. This, I'll call this a formality, but I did run it by our legal representative, and everything's fine. This basically allows AT&amp;T to use the right of way like they have for the last probably 50 years. And this renews the contract in another five years. All approved by legal.
I move to approve the resolution.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley, to approve the resolution approving AT&amp;T's five-year Metro Act permit extension. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lasperrance.
Yes, motion carried. Item 066, 2023, this is consider approval of an outdoor gathering space permit for the Cascade Heritage Festival. Manager Anjeski?
Thank you Supervisor Lasperrance. Let's take those next three.
Perfect.
They're all related. The heritage event is going to be held on September 16. And these are needed approvals, one for the outdoor gathering. If you need more people. The other one is for a special license that the township is going to get to supply to the festival rather than a vendor getting it. And the third one is for road closures around the event. Let me explain a little bit about a little difference we're going to do this year with the Heritage Festival. The township is going to have the license. We are going to buy the, close your ears, everybody, beer for the festival from a local company, the.
Thornapple Brewing Company?
Thank you, Thornapple Brewing Company. We will have the required person get the training to be on site to watch the selling and the administration of the beer. Instead of the profits from the beer sales going to an outside company, who we did, they did a nice job. I don't see anything negative, but there was a lot of money made by someone that we could have kept in-house. Our goal is, and we just spoke with Brad again this afternoon, Katie and I did, our goal is to break even. We want to take the profits from the beer sales, use that money to pay for the city employees that will be there, including the firemen and any building grounds people, renting of the tents, et cetera. We don't want to make any money. So anybody out there, we're not looking to make a profit. We're looking to have the city, have the township pay no money for the expenses. And also to help Brad cover his expenses. Now, if we make a tremendous amount of money and pay for all the expenses, et cetera, we will add that to the budget on a line item and have it to start for next year. So everything that's made at the festival goes back into the township and the township event. So what we're asking for tonight is the approval of those three resolutions. One, the permit, one, the licensed permit, and then the road closure.
And just for background, for any residents who may not have much experience with the Heritage Festival or Heritage Day, Brad Anderson, who grew up in Cascade and teaches at Forest Hills Central and coaches wrestling, came up with the idea at the end of COVID, after the township had had to cancel the last two Fourth of July celebrations. We were looking to do a fall event. Brad reached out, Mr. Anderson, and it was perfect. So the goal, this will be our third annual Heritage Day celebration, September 16.
Sixteen.
Afternoon, and it will be the small park kitty corner from Tuffy, Westdale Memorial Park, and into the Cascade Christian property. Yep. And last year, we used as an opportunity to honor World War II vet Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, Virgil Westdale. So we're looking forward to it. And Brad Anderson has been a fantastic helper, party planner, community organizer. So hopefully everyone is able to come out this year. Let's take the, any other comments or questions? John Shipley?
I've got one. Ted, this is great. I'm glad that everybody's going to be win-win. And traditionally, all these activities down in the village have not been a traffic stopper. And I don't think that we've gotten very many residents complaining about traffic or inconveniences. My only question is, we live in a legally liable world today. Do we have sufficient coverage or protection in case something did happen after somebody consumed some alcoholic beverages?
Good question. You always get, Katie is getting, it's called a one-day umbrella coverage for an event. So you can buy that from a local or any insurance company. It's called umbrella coverage. So yes, we will get that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ted, for your work on this. And also, Ms. Stein, both in the two years in the past, we just kind of lost a lot of money. So we appreciate you.
Well, we looked at it, we said, where's all the beer money going? And I know from past festivals that if people consume beer on a hot day, you could make a lot of money.
The first year, we lost the unused beer and we lost the money. So we're only getting better every year.
We're learning. Maybe that's a poem in the river.
We'll never know, it just disappeared.
I got excited, quick story, it's funny. A festival I was in in another city, we had a person that used the festival and the beer sales to enhance her own image. So she would be in the beer tent, here, here's a free beer. I mean, here's our beer. Well, that's against Michigan law, you can't do that. And she would just, I don't know, but you do things right here. So I'm glad we do it right.
All right, let's vote 066, 2023. This will be approval of the permit for the outdoor gathering.
Shipley makes a motion to approve the permit for the festival itself.
I support.
It's a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee Kessel, to approve the outdoor gathering permit for the September 16 Heritage Day Festival. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 067, 2023, resolution for the special license permit for the Heritage Day Festival.
Shipley makes a motion again to make the resolution for a special license permit for the Cascade Heritage Festival as printed.
Support.
It's a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee Nordhook, to approve the resolution as written for the special license permit for Cascade Heritage Festival. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lasperrance.
Yes, motion carried. Lastly, 068, 2023, consider the resolution for the road closures for the same Heritage Festival.
Make a motion to approve the resolution for road closures?
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by Trustee Shipley, to approve the resolution as written for road closures related to the Cascade Heritage Festival. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. And Supervisor Lasperrance.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Stein, for all your work behind the scenes on this. You've done a great job. Having no items on the discussion list? Article 11, public comments. You're not limited to items on this agenda, but anything is fair game. Well, not anything, but.
Yeah, right.
We'll air on free speech.
Hi there, Scott and Salma. I was just curious again about the pathway system. If there's any way that we can get buildings and grounds. There's still quite a bit of weeds coming through a lot of the, obviously not the new portion down Cascade Road or anything like that, but along like Thornapple River and, you know, Lairway Lake or what have you, where there's been cracks, there's significant amount of weeds just popping through. I don't know if they drive down with their little bobcat golf cart and weed whacker and leaf blower and, you know, and possibly even some weed killer. I remember back when I used to work here doing landscape and all that. We would, you know, heck, you'd spray some of the weed killer on the weeds and you'd walk back, not even 10 minutes later, and they're already brown. I mean, some of this stuff, it was pretty potent. So I don't know, just something to be aware about. If that's something that we can do, that'd be great.
Definitely. Manager Anjeski, we can.
Well, we're going to address something with the building and grounds in my report. So you might be pleased.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online wishing to comment? Article 12, manager comments.
All right, we'll do a couple of things tonight. First, we hired a new building and grounds supervisor. So now we will have someone directly in charge and involved with the four or five people we have, plus the summer help, that can address those kinds of problems. We'll have more supervision, more planning, more activity in that department. The person we hired was from within. You all know him, Brian. He's been around here since 2012.
Last name?
I don't know.
He lives in Cascade?
Lives in Cascade.
Oh, Ryan.
Yeah, Ryan.
Oh, right. McCarthy.
Yeah, we had all three apply. We had several good candidates from outside. But in the interview, Ryan came out on top along with another person, and we thought it's best, and I agree with this, promote from within, give somebody within an opportunity. And Ryan's going to do a good job, so he starts tomorrow. We're going to put him right to work.
He doesn't, he's generous. He doesn't want to time off in between jobs.
No, no. So. Okay. Library RFP, we discussed this morning in building or in finance and personnel. That will be awarded next meeting. And we can proceed with the refurbishing of the inside of the library. That's a very good project for the people of Cascade. So here's where I'm going to spend my most time. As you all know, and State Senator and Spencer, you don't, maybe do or don't know what's been going on here as far as public transportation. But the rapid, we no longer are dealing with. So today, for everybody online and the few in the audience, we had a very good meeting with the business community. And the idea behind the meeting right here was to determine how many people need to take a bus to and from work to the businesses on 28th Street. So that we can work with the Hope Network and design a route that's better than what the rapid was doing, where they just said, well, we're just going to run this route and that's it, take it or leave. The most came from Meyer. We had Goodwill, we had Cascade Engineering, we'd had representatives from YMCA. And the other big ones along 28th Street, we're going to address in person or with a letter. Because we need, any of you out there who can help, we need the data from the businesses, letting us know how many workers need to use the bus and what time their shifts are. So it's progressing. Scott from the Hope Network feels confident we can get this going on time. It may have a few bugs to work out as we do the routes and find out where the people are and how to get them to and from work. So that's one area. We're going to get people to and from work. The other area that Hope Network is going to help us with is providing bus transportation or van transportation for individuals with disabilities or special needs. And that's very important also because, again, the rapid is cutting off service. So we have to find a way to get people with disabilities to and from their doctor's appointments, physical therapy, et cetera. So Hope Network's going to address those two. We also have found, and we put it on our website, the RideLink program. And I talked to the representatives from there. And the RideLink program works from Monday through Friday, seven to 4:30, and that's for any individual over 60 to go anywhere in the county. So they don't have to go to a doctor's appointment. They don't have to go to work. They want to go to the bank or go to Meyer. They schedule a ride with RideLink, and RideLink picks them up, takes them, schedule a ride back. It's only $2 each way. So what we have done, we're addressing three quarters of what we need to do. We're finding a way for people to get to and from work. We're finding a way to help the people with disabilities get to their doctors and therapy appointments. And we're handling the seniors, of which I'm one, and so is Timmy, and so are you guys, I think. Getting them to.
Should we do a raised hand?
Wherever they want to go, regardless of their need. Now, someone I know is going to come here and say, what about taking care of me on the weekends at my senior living facility? Well, you know what? If you can't go to the doctor, not doctor, yeah, doctor, bank, Meyer, Monday through Friday, seven to 4:30, and you have to go to wait on a weekend, you're going to have to take care of yourself. Because I know when I shop and I do things and I'm retired, I go during the weekdays. I don't go on the weekends. So we're addressing their needs to go during the week. Now, Mr. State Senator, if I can address this to you for a minute. We were getting calls, and I'm still getting calls, from individuals living in one of the six cities that provides the millage to the rapid. Okay? These particular calls came from Grand Rapids. And the lady was really, really upset because the rapid told her. Now, let me explain. The rapid also told us that the Go Bus Service, which was their other part, is also discontinuing going down 28th Street because we're discontinuing the bus service. Now, the lady called and wanted a ride from Grand Rapids to Cascade, wanted to know if she would still be able to get that after the 28th. And the rapid told her, no.
And to call Cascade.
Yeah, to call us. That's not right. Those people in those cities pay a millage to get a ride from the Go Bus. And how dare them say, we're not taking you to Cascade because we're no longer doing business with Cascade? So we would appreciate if one of you or both of you could look into that. And it's not right that people are paying the millage and then being told, I'm sorry, we're not, we're going to take you everywhere, but not to Cascade.
If you also know that any management at the mall, we need a spot for our guys to park when we pick up people where the rapid ends service and Cascade begins?
Yeah, we're exploring different parking lots because as Hope Network is not a public transportation, we cannot use the bus stops along Route 28. So we're looking at working out arrangements with large parking lots where we could just take a spot for five minutes, have the people get on the bus or leave them off there. So thank you for your help.
You didn't know you were going to get a homework assignment.
I just want to say to everybody, kudos to Ted, Grace, and the DDA. It was a really productive session this morning. And the Hope Network really has their act together. This Scott is willing to think outside the box. He's passionate about the Wheels to Work program. The Wheels to Work program is what the, well, the rapid, we're replaced by the rapid. That's separate from the Go Bus for special needs and disabilities. That's a different issue that we'll also address with Hope Network. But the work that Grace and Ted and the DDA have been doing with Hope Network. And as Scott from Hope Network said today, we need to do in eight months, we need to do that work in two weeks. So they're really aggressive and positive. And like I said, thinking outside the box. And I think the thing that's really exceptional about this is that it's a government slash nonprofit partnership.
And later, we're going to add the business.
Which is important too, because right now, we are paying out of pocket for this service, the rapid linear route, you know, till 10:00 at night, every 30 minutes. There's more than one bus in Cascade Township, and we pay $77 per service hour. 12 stops east of Meyer where the majority of people get off. I mean, it just, it's so inefficient. So we're going to have you up and running with a service that meets the needs of the people who are actually using it and benefits those businesses. But then later on, Wheels to Work is the perfect partner because those big box stores, Walmart, Target, Meyer, they need to have skin in the game if Cascade Township is going to be bringing in their employees. So right now, so it's great that we'll handle it at the beginning, but then there's going to be a transition. Because if Walmart wants us, you know, paying our tax dollars to get their employees there, well, even if it's a little bit, they got to have some skin in the game. We're not just going to foot the bill.
And I think what we were surprised at is that Meyer alone said they have up to 120 people, 30 full-time.
Use the bus.
Their numbers, yes.
Well, I think we went, whoa, you know, that just changed, almost changed the dynamics, and Ted's working on it. And Goodwill had at least 10. The YMCA said, all, some of our members are up in arms because they need the bus. So anyhow, it's just creative, it's outside the box. But I like the government slash nonprofit partnership. It's a win-win.
And the DDA did a fantastic, Ted, you have really done great. McKenna Consulting, I mean, put in tons of research. We did our homework, all the shots that Cascade Township has been taking, you know, with all the stereotypes, just, there's no basis to it. But the DDA, and specifically you and McKenna, really knocked it out of the park.
Well, we'll say one more thing too. The Hope Network is going to do with smaller vans, buses. We saw so many times these big buses driving on 28th Street with a couple of people in it.
Yeah.
And we also, there's one item we can't address right now, but we'll address in the future, and that's shoppers. Right now, we're concentrating on getting people to and from work, helping the disabled, disadvantaged. But later on, we want to add shoppers when we know what capacity we have in the buses.
And in Walmart and Meyer, the ones who are receiving those shoppers have skin in the game. Otherwise, we're not paying for it.
That's the development. And one more thing for the representatives here. I'll tell you another quick story. The rapid was servicing the YMCA. The YMCA has a lot, I think 480, 420 individuals with disabilities, some sort of disability, going there to work out. We had a bus stop right in front of YMCA. The rapid arbitrarily took it away and put it on 28th Street and said, you know, that's it, our decision. We're no longer going to the YMCA.
But then when you met him at Denny's for breakfast after, you know, a couple of weeks ago, But then when you met him at Denny's for breakfast after, you know, a couple of weeks ago, that stop's been pulled for over a year, but he brought that up and you thought we were the heartless.
Yeah, I thought we were at fault and then I found out they pulled it, not us. So anyway, that's it. That ends my recording.
Good job, Ted.
Yeah, good job, Ted.
Board member comment.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody and Senator for being here. Scott, it's great to see you. You're one of our biggest supporters. And also keep us on straight and narrow. What happened to our crowd? You know, we worked up to where we had twenty, twenty-five people in here. Now we've got the key members, but no, no stop.
This is by far the lightest, lightest meeting.
Well, anyway.
Something controversial on.
Anybody that's out there in Zoom land, thank you for, uh, attending also. I got one more thing. Folks, we got to make a change here. We see the finances after the bills have been paid, correct?
We're working on that.
Well, it's not soon enough. We, yep. After the bills are paid, the finances come to us at the next board meeting for approval, but they've already been paid. As an example, one of the PR firms that we've decided not to keep on our payroll is still setting bills and being paid. We have severed several corporations that we've dealt business with before, for instance, engineering. We hired an engineer in house because we were paying a huge amount for an engineer to go out and look at the cotton picking. Scott, uh, with all due respect, the cotton picking pathways. And we hired an engineer that did the whole township in eight hours. Why are we still paying bills to people that we've either decided not to do business with? Or we got people perhaps in the township, they're saying, hey, A B C tree company, come on over here and trim these trees without authorization, without us knowing about it. We, the board are responsible to the residents to utilize their tax dollars efficiently, honestly and openly. And with the system that we got now, it ain't happening.
Ted, how long have you been here?
Not going to handle.
You want to be here for another month and a half?
Three and a half months. All right. And then the Personnel and Finance Committee was reinstated, what, two months ago? So I have seen, having been here three years, a one eighty in the last two months.
And I will say.
On this exact issue.
We've brought this up at the very first Personnel Finance meeting we had. We dug deep into the, the previous way things are done. You think, you think it has changed a lot compared to what it had previously? And we, it's, we're moving the Titanic. We're getting there. There's a lot of things we have to do. For one quick example, I agree with you. So I'm, I don't want to argue with you because I, I brought this up when I first started. Okay. But one example is terms, like when are things due? Right now, everything we get, I think is due on receipt. So because of things like that, we need Ted to be working with companies and our vendors, which he is, to get thirty day terms so that we can get to a point where we can do that. In addition to putting, we've talked a lot about process with purchase orders, how things need to be approved ahead of time before these large dollar amounts, like what you're talking about, are getting paid without anybody even knowing ahead of time. We're working on the process. We're probably seventy-five percent there, right Ted?
Trust me, generally explain a couple. Give me, give me five minutes or two minutes.
You got one minute.
You got five.
We changed things and made it perfectly clear at the manager's meeting that first of all, anything over a thousand dollars needs a purchase order before you order it. When the merchandise or the service is provided, the department head is now responsible to make sure it was done. Make sure we got the thing we ordered, make sure the service was done, gives their okay, turns it in, then the bill will be paid. Secondly, I now have familiar with working with, um, help me.
Liz.
Liz, uh, and I go over every bill that is about to be paid and believe me, some of the department heads have heard from me because I said, what the heck are we spending this money for? And what the heck are we spending that money for? Couple of examples. We're paying one hundred dollars a month for four parks. Of course, for the, um,
I wash station.
Yeah, Iowa, Iowa Station, but naming the company is the one who supplies uniforms. I won't name them. Hundred dollars for each location, four hundred dollars a month, almost five thousand dollars a year to change eye wash. We can do that. We are going to do it. There was a, should I tell them about the Christmas tree? Nah.
Fine, man.
Yeah, do it please. I haven't heard.
When we uncovered last year, we paid fourteen thousand dollars for a Christmas tree.
Wait, was that the lights though?
I don't know what it is.
Down in the village.
Look into it.
Was it the village lighting?
I don't know. I'll find out.
Cause that tree is so terrible.
He's fixed it. He's got Titanic to work with, okay?
It is, trust me.
Let it be a speedboat, Ted.
When some of these bills come in, I look at them and say, why did we pay eight hundred dollars to, I'll use the example, change the light bulb? I need an explanation for this. So the word out there is we need preos. The manager's looking at things. Let's make sure everything's going smooth. It's going to take a while, and she said, not a long time, but a while, but the system is changing and there's going to come a point where we will not pay a bill until it comes to the board, you see the bills and you say, okay, pay the bills.
That's where it should be.
And, and I want to say another thing without trying to rake the coals more than what we have previously. These are all policies that have been in place within the township for a very long time that were not being upheld previously.
Okay, and some of the bills.
That's what's frustrating, I think, is that there, there were policies in place that were not being upheld for many.
But just to clarify, this has nothing to do with current staff and everyone, the, the two people we have in our accounting department or financials are fantastic. One hundred percent.
They're helping me find these things. And some of these bills are from the past, so we're still dealing with them.
Thornapple Special Assessment District? That the township put in char, or you know, we took one for the team. Uh, they needed money for weed control. We set it up. I foolishly looked closely at the process of the, setting up the Special Assessment District and but anyways, we did it simply so that they could have, uh, money to work with, to work, to clean up the river. It's pretty simple. You get the money, then you spend it like a debit card. This board had no idea, and we just found out this past week, that last year management allowed the, uh, the Special Assessment District to spend more than what they had, took it from the general fund. They didn't even know that. And now it needs to be, to be paid back. It's just.
It's changing.
It was bad.
Talking about that and Ms. Treasurer, Mr. Manager. As you know, I sit on this sad Thornapple River.
Not you.
Thing. Such a special dis, uh, Special Assessment District. In the meeting on Monday, we go once again, how much money have we got? How much money have we got left? How much money can we spend on weed control or obstacle, uh, relocation? Because we can't take them out of the river now. And we don't have an answer. I understand that there's a disconnect possibly between money coming in for the Special Assessment District and money going out. So we need to fix that. Because we owe it to the river, three hundred people on the river that are paying this extra money.
And they are on that, on top of that.
I want to say too, and there's stuff that happens behind the scenes that people don't know about. Supervisor Lusperance talked to me about that. I think after the last month's meeting and brought it to me. I talked to Liz about it. We got the bull rolling. I talked to Ted when he started and that is on his long list of things to work on that we will be talking about hopefully at the next meeting about budget, where we're at. Amendments, wh- where funds are at. It's coming up, but I want, I, I don't think people understand how much goes on behind the scenes of trying to get these things fixed.
Well, I don't, the, the Special Assessment District themselves, this isn't a knock on them. They didn't even know about it. They've been asking for what the balance is. To find out that, that management unilaterally, you know, dipped into the township taxpayers' general fund and nobody knows about it. And that, you want an example of how far we've come with, I, I mean, staff that we have now is doing a fantastic job. When we start, when I started three years ago, the Rapid, extension of the Rapid contract was always coming up and it was always like, well, just sign it now and we'll look at the ridership numbers later. Just sign it now. It was always like gun to your head, sign on the dotted line. We'll analyze actual need cost benefit analysis at a later date. So talking with management, I said, you know, well, we've got a contract coming up. Don't we need to, uh, sign it? That, no, last year we went the entire year and it never, it never was signed. The Rapid told us that, you know, they, they just continue service and we pay monthly. So that means never went in front of the board for approval, never went in front of the board for a public, for the public to have an opportunity to review. I don't think that was, uh, mistaken. I think that's a deliberate way to avoid the elephant in the room of, is this four hundred thousand dollar service worth taxpayers' money? But taxpayers didn't know about it because it never got signed and nobody said anything. And then secondly, last, another example of how far we've come, that same year, so this was three years ago, we were paying over four hundred thousand dollars for the Rapid service. Again, this was just myself and Manager Swayze. Wait, I had a phone call with the, Ben didn't say anything, but he was on the call with the Rapid and told him, no, not worth it. You don't have support. Turns out that they were charging Cascade Township as if they got a brand new bus. There's some name for it, but as if they got a brand new bus, a brand new driver, started downtown at the bus headquarters, drove it all the way down to Cascade and then started in the township. When the reality was it was just extending bus twenty-eight, the route coming on 28th Street, crossing Patterson into the township. So that one phone conversation, they dropped it over a hundred thousand dollars due to that we would be charged like every other community service hours. So frankly, yes, it takes a while, but this was part of a broader lack of oversight and lack of transparency. I, I mean, one phone call with the Rapid, when you say we're not playing anymore and all of a sudden that saves the township a hundred and twenty. And then the next year, they took me off the email chain negotiating the contract and they were going behind the scenes to, to non-public officials. I didn't find out until someone accidentally included me on one later on.
Um, all I got to say in wrapping this up, and you guys will be glad, is that once again, we talk about transparency.
Exactly.
Everybody wants. So all these issues and challenges that we have, I hope that you're not in a submergible visiting the Titanic.
But all those challenges. Pretty much away from the icebergs now. Now we just want to enjoy the scenery.
All these issues, if they go on for too long, people are saying, what are you trying to hide from me? Where's my tax dollars going? Where's my services going? So it is of, upon us that when we find these little things, we fix them.
And not let egos be blinding and realize that you don't know what you don't know.
And, and I've asked Ted, maybe you can look into this, about our financial system. What would solve this problem is a requisition approval system. Be- before the PO comes, you know, I, 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 I implement these within business, large companies frequently. People, as exactly as John said, we want to see what's being approved before it gets to the PO. If they've already cut the PO in the business process, you're kind of too late. So we need a requisition approval with a workflow that says, okay, if it's this dollar amount, we have a limits of authority. If it's this dollar amount, it goes to so-and-so if it's that.
We have that. It was just a matter of having personnel that actually get it. No, and, and there's a disconnect. We, we had that.
It was our old manager and everything was just select all approve, select all approve.
And there was no oversight, no checks and downs.
We, and there was no going, no, I don't want to use enforcement, but no accountability to do the policy and the system.
Set up that way.
Then what would happen and what happened when Grace and I had to start taking over doing these things before Ted started, was all of a sudden you're getting purchase orders that need approval because the system won't let it keep going further to approve the invoice that were, that had been written months ago.
Right. And all I'm saying is to help you out.
Yeah.
And, and Grace and everybody else is if we do it at the requisition level.
And we.
Ben will have to get to the PO.
Hundred percent, but we have, we're, we're already on the, on the right side of it now because we've got Ted and then we've got a, a new manager coming in. And I just want to say the name, the, the staff that works there now has been fantastic. Liz in finances, Oksana in finances. The discussions that have happened about at the board level dissatisfaction with internal processes or a lack of control doesn't have to do with them. So I feel bad that they were kind of concerned about that. They have done a fantastic job.
So one last comment.
And Ted is.
He's right. He's right. Because in the other cities I've been in, what we did is once a month, we would say at this meeting, we're going to have an item that says approval of the bills. And we did not cut the checks until the next day or the following day after the board. So that's going to be changed, uh, trustee John. Uh, just, just wait one more meeting and I think we'll have everything where it should be as far as the financials. I got a dry, dry throat today. We've already gone through the budget and we found a lot of things. So every department head has worked with me, gone through their budget. I will say the department heads have done well. Everybody's within their budget. You're going to get a list of re appropriations, they're called, in the next meeting. And all it says is within the department, we're going to take some money from here, move it down here because this one had too much. This one didn't have enough. We do it mid-year instead of the way you did it last year where everything was just thrown at you at the last meeting. So we're going to do it mid-year and then when Jade takes over, he'll have another re appropriations at your last meeting in December, but they'll be very little because most of them we've done now.
And to, the primary strength that we saw in both Ted and Jade was the financial background. So I really do think we're in good hands.
And knock on wood, and everybody there, close your ears. It would be very hard to pull one over on me because I've seen a lot and I, I've stopped a lot. So I think you can feel confident that in, in, as I said, this is not wood, but it's whatever it is, that for someone to pull a fast one on me is, is very rare, very rare. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Real quick, just because we have Senator Heisinger in person, um, PFAS. The money is allocated, but I don't know if there's anything you can do. We've, uh, former Senator or Congressman Meyer, there was a large federal amount of money that hasn't yet made its way down and also some ARPA funds that we're still waiting on. So anything that you can do to help residents who've been, uh, dealing with this PFAS issue would be, would be appreciated. Thank you so much.
He probably didn't think he was going to gain all this.
No, the check, we've, you know, the check's in the mail, but we just loved it. If you could do anything to check on the mail. And then lastly, thank you to the Sheriff's Department for the free press about the, um, underage human trafficking sting that happened to be in, they used one of our fantastic hotels in Cascade Township, which just serves as another reminder that, um, we're going to be cracking down in different ways because those are the same hotels where the ownership is, um, doesn't live in Cascade, doesn't have anything really to do with the community, appeals their tax assessments every time and, um, requires a lot of public safety funds. So we're going to work on all fronts of that so that hopefully they can choose somewhere else to operate their sting. On that note.
Can you make a motion for adjournment?
It's important. Some motion by clerks later, supported by, uh, Treasurer Corstansh would adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed?
Nay.
Motion carried. We are adjourned.